Thanks, and welcome to the Wednesday, September 13th, 2023, meeting of the Redmond Planning Commission. Call this meeting to order and start with a roll call. Commissioner Woodier.
Present.
Commissioner Aparna.
Present.
Commissioner Van Nyman.
Present.
Commissioner Sheffrin.
Present.
Vice Chair Weston.
Present.
And I'm Chair Sherri Nichols. Commissioner Nueva Camina is excused tonight as she is ill. I look for a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 And the agenda is approved. We have the meeting minutes from August 23rd, 2023, and the meeting summary from August 30th, 20... that should be 2023. We're not so advanced that we're doing the 2030 meeting summaries yet. So I look for a motion to approve those meeting minutes and meeting summary.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And those are approved. This is the opportunity in the meeting where we allow for public comment on any item that is not the subject for a public hearing. And we don't have anyone here tonight to speak to us, and no one has signed up to call in, so we will move on. Before we move on, though, I do want to note the staff members present tonight who've extended their workday to support us: Chip Cornwell, Becky Frye, Kim Dietz, Lauren Alpert, Lisa Rigg, Ann Dettelbach, and Ian Lefkort. We appreciate their help. And with that, we will move on to the Redmond 2023 Water System Plan introduction. And I will turn it over to Lisa Rigg and Ann Dettelbach.
All right. Okay, so my name's Lisa Rigg. I'm a senior utility engineer with the Public Works Department, and I'm here tonight with Ann Dettelbach, senior planner, to introduce our updated draft of the water system plan. So our purpose this evening is to introduce the water system plan in preparation for review and a request for formal approval recommendation later in the year, early next year. So tonight, we'll be giving some background on the water system, giving a briefing on our efforts so far to update the water system plan, and gathering any questions or topics you may have for our upcoming Planning Commission study session, which actually is a couple of months out, so you have lots of time on that. So the water system plan is the functional plan that outlines drinking water service needs to ensure that we have adequate water to meet the requirements of our growing city. And it implements the capital facilities and the utilities elements of our comprehensive plan. So this map just shows our service area, or the area that we provide water service. And you can see most of it is, or the majority is, within city limits or directly adjacent. We also serve the Bear Creek UPDs up off of Novelty Hill through a contract with, an agreement with King County. This map also shows the neighboring service providers and their service areas. The Redmond gets its drinking water supply from the city's five municipal wells and from water that we purchased through Cascade Water Alliance. Having our own wells allows the city to produce about 40% of our drinking water supply independently. And we take a special responsibility to protect the aquifer that provides the groundwater to feed these wells. Our system has over 330 miles of pipe, serving 10 reservoirs, feeding 20 pressure zones, and we have over 19,000 connections to our system. Our Redmond Water Operations staff operate and maintain the city-owned wells, the storage, treatment, and our distribution system. So the water system plan is required by Washington Administrative Code to identify the water system needs for our 10- and 20-year build-out scenarios, so we can anticipate what storage and distribution we need to build. In anticipation of the Redmond 2050 Plan, we use the population growth distribution numbers that were available last fall for the preliminary preferred alternative to inform our 10- and 20-year growth scenarios. Climate change is being considered for supply impacts in our partnership with Cascade Water Alliance, as they work to develop lake taps as a future secondary supply for drinking water. We've looked at potential water shortage scenarios in our emergency response, or our water system risk and resiliency analysis, and our emergency response plan, which we completed in 2019 and 2020, respectively. As in the past, most of the pipe improvements that we expect to see over this next 10 years will be done by private development to serve development projects. Our capital focus will be more on providing increased storage, source improvements, including wells and treatment facilities, and replacement of aging infrastructure to be more proactive in our support of future growth, so we can support it adequately. A lot of the aging pipe that the city has is in some of the older, moderately developed single-family neighborhoods, and by providing improvements in these areas, it'll help to not only provide better service for those homes, but it'll support construction of the missing middle housing. Both the private development improvements and the city projects will help the water to provide more climate resilient service to our community. So we've done a really robust outreach process for the water system plan so far, with the community e-news and other focused distribution announcements, development of an informational website, Let's Connect website, and you can see the address at the bottom of the page if you want to check it out, and several sets of open office hours and an online open house. We received seven requests from the public to review the water system plan, and they had two questions, but no comments so far. And those are: What is the city doing to protect our water from potential contamination of our water supply from underground gasoline storage tanks? And what is the plan to replace the asbestos cement water supply in Idlewood? We also sent the plan to our neighboring service providers, Department of Ecology, Department of Health, and King County. And so far, we've received feedback from Cascade Water Alliance, King County, and Department of Ecology, and we expect to hear back from Department of Health and the neighboring jurisdictions before the end of the month. So this just kind of shows where we are in the process. We've completed the preliminary draft plan, finished that up in June, routed it for review, done the initial public outreach that I mentioned, and obtained our project CEPA determination of non-significance. So our plan is to be back for a study session in December, and we'll follow that with a public hearing and a second study session, if you would like, in January. And once all of your comments and questions have been addressed, we'll be seeking the formal recommendation for approval. So our next steps, prior to asking for your approval, we'll be working behind the scenes to ensure all that the comments that we receive from King County, Department of Ecology, Department of Health, and the neighboring providers and the public have been adequately addressed. After we get a formal recommendation from Planning Commission, we'll move forward to City Council for their review and approval. Once that is done, we'll be sending it to King County, where it has to work its way through the county adoption process by the county council. And then, once all that is done, it will go to Department of Health for their final So with that, the end of my presentation, I'm happy to jot down any questions you have now, or if you want to just email them to me, I can make sure we have answers ready for our study session. Thank you for the opportunity to present tonight.
Thank you. I know Aparna has questions, so we'll start with her.
Yes. And I need to apologize upfront, because I finished work at 3:30, and so I just saw the email about five minutes before I logged on.
Sure, no problem.
So I have not had any chance to go through it.
Yeah, I think she's going to sort of broadly summarize the email and...
Great.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Lisa. I did not expect a response or anything right now. It was just me trying to get things out there for us. Okay. Okay, I'm going to repeat that. I didn't really expect a response, Lisa. It was just more trying to get everything in front of all you guys to kind of... I'm guessing a lot of this is already done, but it's just for clarification's sake, so it's just out there. So primarily, my concerns were that I know that the scenario analysis in the water plan, and I actually read the 273 pages or something.
Oh, my gosh.
The scenario analysis involves the growth scenarios, but if you combine it with the climate change pressures that we might see, I don't know. I just want to make sure that we are in good hands in that thing. So just trying to make sure that we're modeling those scenarios as well, based on the climate vulnerability in the study that was done by the city. And overall, I think, I feel, and I think you will agree, that water deserves more prominence on the stage. I think the Commission understands that we talk about sustainability a lot in terms of energy, green building programs is also in terms of emissions and energy. Water comes up, but it's a single, small, two words, maybe, water conservation. So the document that I put together talks about it from the highest levels, where we are looking at it from a perspective of water rights to ensure that the city and the city residents will have access to water in 30 years, 40 years' time, despite all the pressures, commercial, climate change, growth, what have you. Looking to secure quantity and quality of water, which is kind of important, both are addressed in different areas of the planning process, from what I understand. So I've put in questions for each of these, and I'm hoping that somebody will help me understand this. Then it comes down to us folk, right? Where is a conservation of water at point of views? How do we conserve water in our daily lives, whether we're working or we reside in Redmond? So that feeds into the green building program and what we can do for water conservation over there. There are some suggestions in the document over there, which we can discuss. And the last bit is about gray water reuse and rainwater management, again, things that we should consider for things across the city when water pressures are there. So I recognize that water, from a perspective of, you know, we have the five wells from the city, but we are dependent, for 60% of our needs are coming from Cascade Water Alliance. So I think it behooves the city to understand what their plans are, not just in terms of immediate expansion, but long-term planning for securing water across the region. I have nightmares about this. These scenarios are playing across the world already, where one jurisdiction fights the other, people fight each other for water, access to water, because we are drilling, drilling, pulling out everything we have on the ground, and then we are left with nothing. And one dry winter and one dry summer, and all hell breaks loose, because water's essential to life. So I just urge staff, commissioners, and anybody who's listening out there to think about water as something that we find now. I think we're doing great now, right? But I think this is something we put into play now and edge towards a reality where we have it under control. So I really urge everybody to think about this and address these questions. I'm guessing staff has already got a lot of this handled, just one answer, that's all. So that's it. Thank you, and thank you, Lisa.
Thank you, and I very much appreciate your support and your interest in keeping our water system functioning.
Other commissioners? Commissioner Van Nyman?
I will admit to not having read the 295 pages. Sorry, I had it. I had it. I turned it the wrong way. I said I would admit that I did not read all 295 pages. So that being said, and related to Aparna's questions about climate change, one of the things that we've seen is where it's not just the... there can be a drought, say, for example, in Southern California, and then you get the deluge. So how do you deal with the deluge? And how do you actually take advantage of it when there's erratic inputs of water? And that, you know, what is it that we can be doing, and what is the city of Redmond Planning and Cascade Water Alliance planning to do to take advantage, potentially, of large inputs of, you know, things that would be like flooding events? And how do you actually capture some of that water, instead of letting it all run off
So I am jotting this down, and I am going to talk to the staff members that are much more engaged with, directly with Cascade and their policies. Right now, we have a good, you know, with the Cedar River, with the watershed that we have now, we're in great shape for the foreseeable future, but as you've brought up, I mean, there's so much change that we have to plan for, kind of worst case, and so...
I'll also have, we have a stormwater management plan that...
Would tie in to that.
That ties into that, and that at some point, you'll see come before the Planning Commission. It's come before the Planning Commission in the past. So like, when you go around and see all those stormwater detention ponds, that's part of the stormwater management plan, to deal with large rainfall events, to sort of let them accumulate there and slowly... Yeah.
And it's all tied together, so the infiltr... you know, we're looking more and more to use infiltration and to recharge our aquifers as opposed to just holding back the stormwater and then releasing it to the water bodies. So it really does, it all very much ties together, because it's, I mean, it's really the whole cycle of water.
Commissioner Woodier.
Yeah, I had a question. As we think about the impact to excess water through flooding or depleted water due to summer or winter or multiple seasonal dry periods, are we able to measure what that impact is going to be on the water supply? So, you know, if we have one bad year, how much impact is that to the water supply? I ask that question because I think that also impacts what the contingency plans are. We've seen, to Aparna's comments a few moments ago, a lot of catastrophic events around the world, and that gives me a little bit more assurance that we have good contingency plans that are sufficient enough for the extremes either way.
So as far as the, what we've seen year to year with the wells, we just, we don't see a lot of, a lot of change from year to year, even if we have drier years. We have seen a lot more impact from, actually, from de-watering than we have from the, you know, the climate, changes in the climate.
What is de-watering?
Oh, so when, especially in the downtown area, when we, you know, we have all these big buildings coming in, and our water table is quite high, and so in order to build anything below grade, they basically have to do some temporary de-watering. So basically, they put in de-watering wells that it pulls the groundwater out so that they can build below grade. But in doing so, it can have an impact on the levels in our wells. And so that's something we're really closely watching and have been, have been working to actually limit the depth of construction in the downtown area and to limit any permanent de-watering for those buildings.
Okay. I had not considered that, so that's helpful to my understanding. Thank you.
Yes, if you've been on Planning Commission longer, you would have encountered de-watering issues.
Considering they're self-initiated.
Yep, yep. It's all part of the learning process. Commissioner Sheffrin?
Thank you very much. I don't know if you might be able to answer this question, but mine has more to do with public outreach efforts, you know, such as water conservation methods, rain barrel, you know, sort of, I don't know if the city has found a way to offer, you know, like reductions in pricing for Redmond citizens, and those kinds of things. So I don't know if that's perhaps wrapped into some of the Cascade's efforts.
Um, it is...
More of a general public outreach question. Thank you.
So it is, right now, we do pretty much depend on Cascade and their outreach efforts. We did, in the past, have actually had a water conservation position in the city. We no longer have that, so...
Is that something that could come up again in the future, or do you know?
I...
Okay. I'm not going to put you on the spot.
I don't know at my level.
That's a budget question.
Yeah, it's a budget question, but they did do the, you know, a lot of the rebates and the, and the rain barrel, you know, building rain barrels and having them at a, basically selling them at cost. But Cascade does have a pretty robust outreach and a lot of programmatic things, a lot of educational opportunities, and, you know, going into the school and teaching about conservation. So they have, they have a really good program, so...
Great. Thank you so much.
Commissioner Weston?
Hi. So I had a couple of questions, where everyone's had a chance, can I kind of run through? All right. So the first question that I had was just about the aquifer source. So I wasn't clear if this is rain, or if this is melt from further away that eventually reaches us. But it would be, and I was looking through the document, and I didn't see it, so it might be in some other document that isn't recorded here, but I would love more information about that. And then also, a better understanding, I think there've been some sort of inflammatory articles this summer for other areas where they're drawing down their aquifer. I don't have a sense if that's an issue that Redmond is facing or not, so it would be nice if there are measurements, just to get a sense of what the numbers are for our specific region, so that we can kind of hold that in our heads. A separate issue, I've been noticing houses around my area, which is near Grass Lawn and up into Rose Hill, that are going for sale that still have septic systems, which really surprised me, and I would love clarification if that's actually allowed in Red... I was assuming everything in the city actually had to be sewer-connected, but if it's not, I'd love more information about that.
That's, yeah.
I could speak to that a little bit right now.
That'd be great.
Okay, so if a house, an existing home is on septic and sewer is not available, they are able to basically keep the septic system. If it's a new house, our policy has been, and we have code backing for it, to require that basically any new construction has to extend sewer and connect to, connect to that city sewer. But there are, there are areas, a lot of pockets, especially...
Rose Hill especially.
Like Rose Hill area and parts of Education Hill and Grass Lawn that, you know, the houses have functioning septic systems, and until there's something that actually will impact that system, the city, we really don't have the ability to require connection unless there's sewer nearby.
And if there is sewer nearby?
So city code gives us the authorization to require anybody within 200 feet of a city sewer to connect at any time. We have not required that. If people have a functioning septic system, if their septic system fails, then we would pursue that. You know, it's, it can be a pretty significant cost, because they have to connect the side sewer, and oftentimes, they're connecting, you know, it can, they're crossing over other utilities, and it's, yeah, it can, it can be fairly expensive, and so we try, we try to balance that.
Yeah. So just for clarity, sewers are part of the wastewater plan, not the...
Separate from the stormwater.
Which is separate from the stormwater plan...
Yeah.
Which is separate from the water system plan.
Thank you. That's a very helpful clarification, so...
Yeah.
Thank you for the background.
And then there is a, there is something that explains the CARA, the Critical Aquifer Area Recharge, and that's another thing that's been through Planning Commission before your time, but, yeah. There's another document that describes the aquifer recharge area.
Amazing. I figured there was.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Can I ask two more that I think are, actually, no, one of them is, well, one of them might be, source. So Commissioner Aparna mentioned gray water systems. I've had the same question, both for single-family residential and then also like larger installations. I don't know if that's, would that be covered in this plan?
Uh, no, gray water systems would be more in the wastewater plan. We do have gray water systems in Microsoft, some of the new Microsoft development, and it was, I think that's really the only one that has it right now. There are, there are a lot of complexities in making sure that those systems work and that you don't have, you know, cross-contam, you know, cross-contamination and...
Right.
Yeah.
Okay.
So I'd say we're kind of in the beginning stages of looking at that.
Okay. I didn't know if it fit under some of the reclamation pieces.
I would say that gray water pretty, it more ties into wastewater and stormwater.
Okay. And then one final question, and I'm almost positive this is actually drinking water. We've had burst pipes in my neighborhood, and those are obviously one-offs and obviously fairly destructive. But I was just curious, I didn't actually see any sort of risk map on, like, which pipes, you mentioned it briefly in your presentation, but which neighborhoods are most likely to be at risk for that? are most likely to be at risk for that? And if the city has a plan to go in and like proactively address some of the pipes?
So we have a, there is actually a map. It's, it's, it's a pretty small map as far as the level of detail that shows where all the, most of those pipes are the, the AC pipes that we were talking about. So the old asbestos cement pipes. And they are definitely getting near the end of their useful lives and they do tend to break more easily because they're, they're a little more of a brittle pipe. And so we have actually just, just recently started looking at a more programmatic approach to replacing those pipes. So we've identified areas of AC pipe in need of replacement and we're working to do that replacement in combination with the city, with the overlay projects that are going on. So we don't have to rip up the road twice, basically. And then we're also looking in, in those areas that have the older undersized pipe and trying to take a programmatic approach to replacing those, you know.
Would that be part of this plan or is that a separate project entirely?
So it would be a separate, it's a separate capital project, but it is listed in this plan as, as one of, you know, one of the needs.
Okay.
To keep our system, our system functioning well.
Great. Thank you.
Anybody else? I just wanted to, Commissioner Weston mentioned this, but it kind of got lost in everything else. She asked about, are we drawing down our aquifer? Because that's something that's happening in a lot of places. And I get the impression that we're not, but I was having a hard time finding that in the, the plan. So I have that question as well. Are we, are we drawing down or are we pretty stable on our aquifer use? And similarly on our, on Cascade Water Alliance's resources?
So as far as the aquifer, we have, it's called an unconfined aquifer. So it's, it's very, actually very prolific.
Mm-hmm.
Whereas some, a confined aquifer, and I'll probably butcher this, so I will hear about it tomorrow from my, the people that know better than me. But a confined aquifer is more like an underground lake.
Mm-hmm.
So it's like a set amount of water. And an unconfined aquifer is more like a big underground river that's continually flowing and recharging. And ours fortunately is an unconfined aquifer. It's fairly shallow. So we, we don't see that same level of depletion or fluctuation. Even when we have de-watering, the aquifer tends to, once you stop drawing out that groundwater, it tends to rebound fairly quickly.
Okay. Yeah, that's, that's my memory of, of, from the presentation we had on the, on the critical area and the recharge. It was really like a river.
Yeah.
Flowing down.
And then as far as Cascade, you know, right now and for the, at least the next 10 years or more, actually the next 20 years, the existing sources that they have are adequate for their projected growth. But they are also looking at lake taps. So they've, they've secured that water, right? And so they'll be, they're looking at developing that, you know, quite a long time from now. But in addition, there, there are some preliminary talks of, about being able to buy water from Tacoma Water. And they also have a pretty,
Okay.
You know, they have, they have more, more water than they have demand in the future. So.
Okay. That answers my question. I was just having a hard time pulling that out of, out of the document. Anything, any other questions from commissioners? Seeing none, then thank you for the presentation and your time, Lisa. We very much appreciate it and look forward to.
Thank you so much.
Look forward to seeing you again later this year.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. We will move on to the Redmond Zoning Code Rewrite Annual Code Cleanups Study Session. Kim Dietz?
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Kimberly Dietz, Principal Planner with Planning and Community Development. And I work closely with Long Range Current Planning and Economic Development. What you're going to see this evening as part of the rewrite actually spans a little bit further than that. And it includes work by planning, public works, and park staff. I'll share my presentation. Okay. So this is Phase Two of the Redmond Zoning Code Rewrite. You saw Phase One, I believe about two years ago. And the purpose of this evening is a briefing. Staff will provide an overview of the components that are part of this minor package and also propose the review schedule that the Planning Commission will use to hold a public hearing and make its recommendation to City Council. This is a Type Six review process. So it does involve a recommendation to you by the Technical Committee, which arrived today. I'm very happy to say that that is in your inbox and hopefully will be on the webpage. And then the Planning Commission holds the hearing and does review and then makes a recommendation to the City Council. And City Council is currently anticipated to take action on just these minor amendments and maybe only a portion of the minor amendments in Q1 of 2024. That is tentative though. The rewrite is a multi-year, multi-phase project and it is part of the Redmond 2050 because it is very important and required by state law that the regulations of a city are consistent with the policies. So as policy changes, so do the regulations. And you can see here, we are in Phase Two. That is what is before you right now. And Phase Three is already ramping up. It's in scoping and staffing for some more significant amendments that will also be done in partnership with 2050. And then once 2050 ends and we start to move into functional plan updates, there'll still be more with the rewrite so that the policies can trickle down to the regulations. And then those that are specific to a functional plan, also we need to make those consistent with the regulations. So the purpose of the rewrite and this package in particular, we are continuing to streamline the code. It's very important for us to continue to streamline and try to make the code easier to understand, clearer, more accessible to our customers. And customers include people who are developing in the city, owning property and wanting to do minor to major improvements to their home or business, and also to staff and making sure that staff is able to easily implement the code on behalf of our customers. We also use the rewrite to address city priorities. And the priorities that are part of this year's package do include more coordination with 20, with the Redmond 2050, coordination with the Housing Action Plan, incorporating any amount of accessibility, diversity, equity, and inclusion that we discover in the zoning code as we're looking at individual chapters and sections. And then finally incorporating the recommendations of the Climate Emergency Declaration as well as the Environmental Sustainability Action Plan. And then when you touch the code, you always have the chance of making a mistake. So we try to avoid creating errors and inconsistencies, but fortunately on an annual basis, we will look to correct any of those and hopefully not make more of them. So this package began in 2021. And I mentioned, planning, public works, and park staff came together to identify the needs for amendments, to develop those, to review those internally with all staff that would be affected, and then also to reach out to our stakeholders. We have well over 1,000 stakeholders that we share with Redmond 2050 and those that are specific to development. Development includes not only the developers and designers, but also their legal advisors. And so we do get very robust feedback throughout the process. We start with conceptual amendments and take them all the way through the plant, the final draft amendments. And then once they begin the technical committee process, we are sharing our CIPA evaluation as well as the technical committee's recommendation with our stakeholders. So we do get feedback along the entire way, including the, the public hearing that the Planning Commission will hold the end of this month. We also look to our other plans and our codes for consistency. And so one of the things we do is we test things before amendments before we bring them to you. We call it technical testing. And we take the time to coordinate with people who are implementing the code on a daily basis, the Development Services Center staff, to make sure that any change that we make is clear to them, is consistent with the standards that they use to apply, for example, transportation standards. So they understand how many trips a particular type of development would be generating. So we have to make sure that we're consistent all along the way. And so that's another check and balance that we use. And in the case of this package, it went through three rounds of technical testing for internal consistency. So we believe that we have a pretty solid package, but you never know. There's always opportunity, like I said. The rewrite is a much broader package than you are seeing tonight. You've already reviewed several pieces of it through the Housing Action Plan, through Overlay and Redmond 2050. You have a small package that's before you this evening as the cleanup. And then you will also have more coming forward in the beginning of the year through transportation. So it's a, it's a shared story. And tonight involves minor, mainly minor amendments. So I just want to run through a couple of them to provide example. So Tree Wells is one. And this was an amendment that was needed to remove a piece of code that was reflecting an old standard of the city. It was tree grates. And so we are finding any opportunity to change tree grates to tree wells. And that reflects a standard detail that the city develops also on an annual basis. So there's, there's that consistency that I was talking about. The next example is setbacks. So this is a minor amendment in that we noticed our code tables were causing a lot of questions. And people were asking whether a setback measurement was a minimum, a maximum, what, what exactly was it? And we realized that there was information missing in our tables. So the first part of setbacks is clarifying our tables to make sure that when we talk about setbacks, whether it is a minimum or a maximum, a range, we want to be very specific in our tables. So we'll have a little bit of text amendment there. And then as you look at the image on the left side of the screen, you can see how parcels are laid out in a variety of ways. This is typical of short plats and subdivisions. And what can happen over time then, particularly we have a lot of 1950 developed subdivisions on Education Hill and Idlewood and Overlay and Grass Lawn. And as those homes are redeveloped or as they are proposed for upgrades and additions, it gets a little bit confusing between who sets back how much. And our code today includes a five-foot and a 10-foot setback. So sometimes that results in an unfair setback to one individual who's coming in later than the house that was already provided. And so one of the things we'd like to do is to provide for averaging and a little bit more flexibility. So five and 10 makes 15. That's the average setback and make sure that that is an average setback. So some places might be a little bit closer, some places might be a little bit farther as you compare those two lots side to side. But overall, it would be 15 and it would not go any lower than what the building code would allow. So we're keeping separation for fire and life safety, but we're allowing a little bit more flexibility. So that's a proposal for your consideration. Some of the proposals that are in your packet are involving the Redmond Municipal Code. And these are for reference only. And I say that because the Planning Commission's rules are specific to the zoning code. So you are in place to review amendments to the zoning code as well as to the comprehensive plan. The municipal code is another body, but it does have a lot of relevance and connection to the zoning code. So these are included for reference. And if you read them and find that perhaps staff has mislabeled something or a NMM is not clear, please let us know. We will take those comments and include them as we take these items forward to the City Council, who is the body that's authorized to make decisions on the municipal code. So this one resulted in a comment from a community member who was wanting to make sure that beekeeping could be allowed in more places in the city than it is today. Right now, you can do it in the R1 through R6 zone. And they wanted to be also, to also be able to use this in non-residential zoning districts as well as mixed use. And so with owner or manager permission, we are proposing to allow that to happen. One that is very, very near and dear to the Planning Commission is how the Technical Committee provides its recommendation to you. We realized that there was not clarity on that process within our zoning code. We have other procedures, a deliverance of a, of a report or a recommendation to our City Council, but we didn't have it as it comes from the Technical Committee to the Planning Commission. So we are proposing to clarify that. And also while we are in those specific chapters is to further clarify the noticing requirements. You can see on the right side, number two, that is noticing requirement for amendments that are Type Six, which is what you would normally see for the comp plan and zoning code. And so we want to make sure that for staff, the administrator of those amendments, they have a very clear process going forward. I mentioned earlier that you have seen amendments already as part of the rewrite. And these are shown here. This is reflecting what you have looked at thus far. And this is a combination of Becky Frye's work and the rewrite, Overlay and the, and the zoning code. You are also going to see more. So on the 13th, tonight, you are seeing the cleanups. On the 27th, you will hold a public hearing on those. But you'll also continue your work on the Overlay package. And then you will also see additional housing amendments and transportation amendments later in the year and early next year. So the next step for this item is public hearing and a study session. And I look forward to your questions and comments this evening in order to build out your issues matrix.
Commissioner Arpana?
Thanks, Kim. I just had a question. And I don't know if it's part of today's study session. So just let me know if it isn't. I just didn't quite understand the clarity on permitted uses in the CARA. In, there was a thing about the paint, then I couldn't quite follow what was going on. So could you just talk to that? Because I brought up water quality and it's the aquifer area, right? So is, could you just speak to that a bit? Because I didn't quite understand. Sorry.
Yes, that's actually a pretty easy one from this, this perspective for this package. And what it involves is creating more awareness of the limitations in the CARA involving uses. You start at a zoning district and you learn what uses would be allowed within that zoning district. So if you're in a commercial district, of course, you could do retail, you could maybe do some office, you can do mixed use, for example. Could you have a gas station? So for something like that, there is actually additional code that is sitting in our Critical, Critical Areas section of our code, specific to the CARA. And within there, they have limitations on activities. So you're taking a use group, a large group that might be retail, and you have a list that, of activities that are then prohibited. So some of the uses within that large group might not be possible in all zones. And so what we are proposing is that in the allowed use tables for CARA 1 and CARA 2, the most critical, critical aquifer recharge areas in this city, want to make sure that an applicant as they're reviewing the code is drawn to that particular section of code as they are thinking about a specific use. as they are thinking about a specific use. Yeah.
So as a follow-up, then, when you say there's double containment required, or something like that, is some extra containment above 20 gallons, something like that? I'm sorry, I'm just paraphrasing here. But for the paint, the response on the auto body paint thing, that if there's hazardous chemicals above a certain volume, there'd be extra containment required? Is that part of the code here? Or does that go up a level where we're looking at the land use element and saying these uses not permitted at all?
So that code is specific to the critical areas. This amendment that I'm bringing forward right now is simply creating the connection between the two. It's only that minor piece. The restrictions will be part of your review of the critical areas regulations.
Got it. Thank you. Yeah, I didn't want to jump the gun yet, so thank you.
You're welcome.
No policy implications in this part, in this particular package. Any questions? Commissioner Weston.
So I had a question about the fence height. I would love more clarification of what that actually means on the ground. I was having trouble going back and forth between, like, where would it become seven feet? Where would it stay? Because I think in my neighborhood currently, it's six feet. But that might not be, I was having trouble which document like to follow.
Hmm. I'm not exactly following the question.
Can anyone help? So, echo.
Can you point to the code?
Oh, dear. This is.
I remember seeing it, but I can't.
Let's see, what page am I even on? Page seven of the Attachment B that was sent out today.
B as in boy?
B as in boy.
Okay. And page seven, you said?
Yeah, and it's fence consistency with Redmond Building Code is the page title. But it was a question of, to me, it sounded like raising fences to seven feet unless they're contradicted by the zoning code. But I got tangled up enough in this that I was a little bit confused by the premise. So I wasn't clear if I was misreading it, or if...
Do you have the ability of calling that up on your screen?
Um...
I can, I think.
So it was in the email that you sent at 4:42 today?
I do have, I do have page seven of Attachment B open fence, fences.
Numbered seven at the bottom. Fence consistency with Redmond Building Code.
Oh, yeah. The fences, and, mm-hmm, yeah, we're looking at the right one.
Okay, great. All right, now that we know where we are. So it says that it would, removing this would continue to support neighborhood specificity of fence heights codified within the Redmond zoning code, and only request a building permit when the fence height exceeds seven feet. But I wasn't exactly sure.
What the recommendation?
Which neighborhoods actually have fence codes somewhere to find them. So it was more of a question, like, I couldn't tell what this changed and where.
Yes, yes. Oftentimes, in previous years, when we would work with a neighborhood in the neighborhood planning process, there would be an opportunity to talk about fences. And some neighborhoods had very strong wishes for a certain fence height, as well as a transparency of fences. And as a result of that, neighborhoods themselves, we have 10 neighborhoods in the city, but mainly the residential neighborhoods, ended up with specific fence standards for that neighborhood. You know, some maxed out at five, some maxed out at six, some didn't have a maximum, some wanted a little bit more of an open feel to their fences, and others didn't have a concern about a solid fence. So I wanted to be very clear in this amendment that the amendment that's proposed is only in the general sense when a neighborhood does not have a height specificity, whether it's taller or shorter. What resulted in the past year was that our building code was updated. And the requirement for a building permit, or a fence permit, rather, would be triggered by a fence that's higher than, I believe it's seven feet. In our zoning code, though, we talked about fences over six feet would need a building, a fence permit. Well, people would go to get their fence permit, and they would be told that they don't need a fence permit. So there was actually, you know, a couple, year or year and a half, of a lot of confusion. Because on the planning side, we're saying you need a fence permit, but you go to the building side, and you don't need a fence permit. And so, that was the amendment. There is really no basis for the zoning code to be pointing to the building code and saying you need to get a permit for this. Instead, what the zoning code is maintaining are those neighborhood-specific standards that were pre-established. So if the, if the neighborhood is saying, you know, you can have a maximum amount of five feet of fencing on this type of street, well, that's still in the code. We're not touching that. Yeah.
That's an excellent answer. My only question, then, does it make, is there any way, like, is there a standard final digit or something that we can point to in the Redmond zoning code where, like, fences are covered in a section that ends in this, so that people can go find out, like, their neighborhood? Like, if their neighborhood has?
Oh, yeah, there are several parts, several provisions in the code that would route you to that. In fact, early in the code, and I forget which section it is, but it lists all the other things you need to consider when you are developing your site plan.
Okay.
So there are, you know, there's site standards, there's building standards, there's fence standards, there's a long, long list, or there's that. The building code is going to apply when someone crosses the threshold. And because they're constructing something, it's going to apply for probably a variety of things. You know, it might be a deck, it might be a roof, a variety of reasons that you would be applying the building code and obtaining a building permit.
So can I ask one more follow-up question on that, then? So if, like, my neighborhood was built in the 70s, like, those cedar fences last about 20 years? So people are steadily replacing them. What, like, how would someone in Grass Lawn decide if they needed a permit or not to replace an existing fence? And how would they know how tall they can build?
That is a good question, actually. We do have webpages that tell people. Oftentimes, what happens is that we have code enforcement that happens as a result of a complaint.
Because, so we had this experience a few years ago, and it was very, it was really interesting, like, company by company, who thought we needed a permit, who thought we had limitations on what we could build to, et cetera. So it was very, it was highly varied. But it's, to me, reading this, it didn't feel like it would be more clear from the standpoint of a homeowner who's trying to replace an existing fence, what their options were. So I just, if there's any way to make that a little bit more transparent and obvious, I think that would be helpful to people. Like, if they try to look it up, that they can actually get a correct answer.
Right. That there are neighborhood standards, and when you go over a certain height, you do need a building permit, or a fence permit, rather.
Yeah.
Yeah. Let me, yeah, let me dig into that a little bit and see if there's anything that, for example, code enforcement might have little door hangers that they use. Again, it's because of a complaint. But let me, let me check with our Development Services staff. We are looking at a variety of process improvements right now, and, you know, this might be one of them.
Because I think there are people who are trying to do the right thing.
Yes.
But like, there's a limit to how much, like, effort they'll put in before they think they have the right answer.
It's not always easy.
No, it really isn't.
To do the right thing.
And a lot of companies.
I've replaced a fence, I've replaced a deck, and it's not always easy to find out if you need a permit. And you go to replace it and discover that the person who replaced it before you did not get a permit. And now, you've got a problem because they didn't do a permit. And, yeah.
Right. Yeah, so just making it a little bit easier for people who are actually trying to stay in the rules, to even know what the rules are.
Without having to send an email to the mayor.
Right.
Which is what I've done.
Anyway, thank you. Oh, you're very welcome.
Any other questions at this point? I'll stop sharing. I did, Commissioner Sheffron, have you got your hand up? Oh, for some reason, I saw that. And I did find a typo. I can, it was in Attachment A, page 11.
Okay.
Get back to that. Maybe it was, let me find it real quick. Yes, in 13.04.250, cost of insulation is borne, cost of insulation borne by owner in the red lines, says the Public Works Director or Designee shall require the owner of a broken side sewer to repair the side sewer. The owner of the side sewer, side sewer shall perform to repair within the amount of time dictated by the city. I think that should be the repair, not to repair.
Oh, I see it, yeah. Thank you.
Couldn't parse it until I realized it should be the.
Okay, I will communicate that to the author. Perform. Wonderful. Yes, if you do find any of those, any additional typos, please let us know. As packages get larger, it's very easy to miss those. So thank you.
Anything else tonight?
Okay, well, I look forward to coming back on September 27. If there are any other items that you would like to comment on as I build out the issue matrix, please feel free to email them to me. And we do have some interest in some of these topics, so we are anticipating a small number of people that will be coming on the 27th. Thank you.
So now, we'll move on to Redmond 2050, Overlake Incentives update. Becky, who's now healthy.
We're here to provide a briefing on where we are with the Overlake Incentive Program. Lauren and I are going to tag Team Dina. We'll go back and forth so you don't hear one person's voice for joining on for half hour. So for this evening, we wanted to just bring the Planning Commission up to speed on everything that's been going on. For those of you who are a little bit newer to the Planning Commission, we wanted to make sure that you have the same information about what did we do with the consultant? What were we aiming for? Making sure that everybody was on the same page. And so, we're going to be going through some of the goals of the incentive program, the development standards that are proposed, because the changes that we're making to the baseline are just as important as the incentives, and you need to understand how they work together and how the proposed changes coordinate. And then, what we asked our consultants to study, and then, we'll go through some of the key findings at a really high level. It's the preliminary key findings, and we're doing some testing and interactive engagement with the job community to test what those assumptions were. And then, we'll just briefly talk about what we're doing right now and the next steps and what you can expect. So just, it's a briefing tonight, but we're happy to answer any questions you might have. All right. So for the goals of the incentive program, we are completely replacing the existing one. So why are we doing that? A number of different reasons. One of the big things is we have a lot of different city priorities that aren't necessarily represented in today's incentive program. We also need to accommodate growth, so we need to make sure that our incentive program is tailored to the building forms that we're trying to move into Overlake. We have incentives that are scattered all over code, and not necessarily everybody understands all of the options that they have available to them. So trying to make sure that we're consolidating and that, make it simpler for people to find what their options are. And we're switching to a points-based menu of options to expand flexibility, right? So right now, we have two buckets. You have to do something in the primary goals in order to get to the second package. And then, we're running out of things that were listed, so that needed to be updated just from a conceptual standpoint. We did adopt a gap package update about a year ago now to update the things that were completely out of date, or the, and to get us through until we adopt the new revisions. But the new incentive program will completely replace the existing one. So that is the goal. We did, in early testing, get some community input on the prioritization needing to be very clear, making sure that it's streamlined, and making sure that everything that's on the incentive program is actually financially feasible. And that's one of the reasons why we hired the consultant in the first place, is just to make sure that we're testing how much each of these things cost, and are what we giving in return comparable and compatible. And then, we got a lot of feedback on just making sure things are super clear where we're going into new territory. So we're talking about universal design, we're talking about all of these new things that are trying to accomplish the goals, including affordable commercial, anti-displacement, and just making sure that we're super clear on that. And so, that's something we're definitely working on. There have been some changes that we've already made to the incentive program based on some of that feedback, including consolidating to one less category, just to make it a little bit easier. We've moved some things around. I'm not going to read everything here, it's in your packet. But just to let you know, we did do a lot of changes based off the preliminary first round of testing. So we're currently in a second round of testing and some additional work going on. But we have had a lot of feedback, and we're responding to that feedback. Then, just really want to touch on the development standards that we're proposing, because, again, it's really important to understand how they relate to each other. And one of the biggest things to have as a takeaway is that we are upping what is allowed at the base, so that fewer people need to go into the incentive program in order to accomplish, accomplish the development that's typical of what we see today, right? So moving forward, the use of the incentive program is going to be by different people for different product types, because we're trying to make what you can do by right in the base current without the incentive programs a little bit easier. So that's what you'll see on this. We've talked about this at a couple of previous meetings when we went through the development regulations. But just as a reminder, I mean, we're going from a current base of around three to three and a half in Overlake Village to five, and we're doubling the capacity in OBAT from 1.55 to three. And then, the height restrictions, again, basically, what you're looking at is without the incentive program is going to give you what you have to use the incentive program to get to today. So the podium-style development that we're typically seeing come in, in Overlake, will not necessarily need to use the incentive program. Now, choose to do so, there might be certain type, product types that might want to dip into the incentive program. But the incentive program is built for the future, so that all those types of products don't necessarily need to dive into the incentive program. So just keep that in mind. The podium-style developments will be able to come in without the incentive program. The incentive program that we're testing is more for the taller building types and looking at the future. So the other thing to keep in mind, too, is we're increasing a lot of these things in the base, and it does include things that we're giving. FAR, building height increases, it decreases. and it does include things that we're giving, FAR, building height increases, decreasing parking requirements. We're changing lot coverage requirements over the village to 100% lot coverage. There's definitely a lot more flexibility. We are, that is balanced with some things that we're asking for in return. We've got some new green building requirements that we're proposing as mandatory for Overlake. There's some changes in affordability levels, and we're asking for a minimum building height. So, to move away from the smaller developments so that we can get the type of developments that we need in Overlake. So, just keep this in mind. This is the base. We're increasing the base. We want to see those podium-style developments just be easier to do, let them come in, and that's our standard development. But what we need to be doing is also figuring out how then can we move into incentivizing and getting moving forward those taller building types. So, that's what we're tailoring this around. And so, some of the questions that we've asked, Lauren's gonna go through on exactly what our consultant has done.
I gave it, but I can move it forward if you want.
Sorry about that, just figuring out our PowerPoint. So, some of the things that we, that were central questions in asking our consultant that we brought on board was, are what we're looking at feasible in the city of Redmond? You know, what are the various costs associated with that for developers? What are the costs to the city for implementing these? And will this incentive package actually meet our policy goals? And what are the various cost considerations for the city? So, our consultant, we're kind of still in the first part of this project. It's looking at the incentive program in all of our centers, but we started with Overlake. It's taking a pro forma approach, so they're looking at, you know, what are the costs for developers in doing these? So, looking at first the base entitlements and what those costs are, and then looking at each incentive that's being proposed, and what is the impact to the cost to a development project? And they, I think we'll cover that in a future slide, how they did that. But they looked at a few different prototypes, so a seven-story podium, an 11-story mass timber, and two different tower sizes, so a low tower and a higher tower. So, this is sort of their, their process that they approached, they did. So, looking at those current developed prototypes, assessing that baseline feasibility, looking at the impact of each option of the baseline feasibility, and then creating some sort of point and value framework so that we can do an analysis on that. So, this is kind of the, the pro forma approach assumptions that they took. We can look in some detail on that outside of group, group time. It's, it's pretty detailed, as you can see.
Just wanna point out on this one too, we looked at both the cost impacts and the revenue impacts. Because as we ask for affordable spaces and right now, so the revenue has decreased too. So, we're looking at both cost of construction and ongoing revenue impacts. And then, also, it was looking at also within the metro center and outside of the metro center. So, in that TOD zone, you would receive more points. So, that's where you would potentially max out of your point system would be in the TOD. So, the key findings is that the podium developments that we're currently seeing today won't need to use the new incentive program. Similar to what Becky said earlier, is that we're basically moving the baseline up with the new development regulations. So, what's, the incentive program today is being utilized to build, will be able to be built without any incentives moving forward. And then, looking towards what new sorts of buildings are we gonna wanna see in Overlake? So, looking at higher towers, looking at mass timber construction. And so, those are the things that the, the incentive program will most likely be used for in the future. And so, the way they did this is, one of the, the tools of analysis, it was looking at residual land value. So, that's sort of what you see in the plus and negative there. So, if you look at the, the tower construction is extremely challenging right now under current conditions. So, a lot of what we're looking at is, is hampered by today's market. So, it may not be feasible right now, but it could be feasible in the future with changing market conditions.
Do you wanna add anything?
Yeah, one of the other things that this diagram just kinda illustrates is that the, the initial finding was mass timber is really close. Like, so there might be some things that we can get it to tip over. We've actually had some conversations with developers that might, this might actually be feasible right now with just a few minor changes. So, we'll go forward with that too. But right now, the cost of steel has quadrupled in the last couple of years, and it's not coming down. And so, that's the reason why you see that the, the likelihood of getting a steel construction, that's not, that's not an unexpected result, right? We knew that this was gonna be challenging in today's market. But again, we're looking at future forward and trying to push it to where we can get there and make it ready for that. And so, it's not, it's not an unexpected result to show that steel construction and concrete is, is not necessarily viable in today's market. But that today's market's really weird. And so, that's another big thing that we got from our development community is the conditions of the market and what the banks are requiring today. It's just really, really challenging to do any kind of development. So, looking at the future is really, really super important and not necessarily focusing on what 2023 market is doing.
Just a quick clarification, if we could. Sort of the range of, of heights of a podium versus mass timber versus steel?
Yeah, in each of the different building typologies that they studied, they actually, in order to get a cost estimate, they had to create like, this is my prototypical of this particular thing, and here's what the assumptions would be for that. And obviously, there's many different options, right? They just had to pick something and to cost it out. But we may end up doing some additional evaluation. Again, one of the conversations I had on mass timber just this morning with somebody who's building in our area in the Puget Sound was that really, the 11-story prototype was probably the wrong level of stories, because mass timber, they're saying, in our region pencils out at 12 stories. So, if we had just done a slightly different prototype, we might get some completely different answers. So, they're gonna be giving us some additional information that we may take back and, and do some reiteration to this. So, please, all of this today is like that initial look, but we're still continuing to explore.
Podium sort of tops out at, what, seven stories, nine stories?
Seven or eight.
Yeah.
Just wanted to clarify, engineered timber was not looked at?
Right. Mass timber includes a couple of different types of engineered CLT, a couple of different types of that.
Some of the engineered timber is stronger, so I was just curious if that would push the number up. I don't know if that.
My initial conversations and the initial results from the consultant is that mass timber was much cheaper. In today's market in particular, it's significantly cheaper. And that's why they were saying, we're so close to being, that might be something that just becomes the default that we can come in, which is what we're trying to do, because that would answer a lot of the needs that the city has. If we can just design the code so that the next easy thing to do in Redmond is just a mass timber tower, and then, there we go.
Yes, so, so podiums top out at seven or eight stories. Mass timber is required above that. Steel is required at, what, 20, 30 stories?
The, the low tower they did, what, I have to look at the X report, but I think the high tower was, they estimated like 15, 17 stories.
Okay. Just wondering, just, just trying to get some boundaries around. When does mass, when does mass timber no longer work and you have to go to steel?
Right. I do wanna clarify too that we're not assuming that nine to whatever is mass timber.
Sure.
Because you can actually have nine 12-story building in steel and concrete, right?
Right.
So, that, they're definitely completely different prototypes, but they need to be designed completely different too, because the foundations are different. And you don't wanna necessarily combine the two together, because it makes it more expensive. Whereas if you design a mass timber product from the ground up for mass timber, it's significantly cheaper. That's the feedback we've received.
And I would also wanna emphasize, this is, their approach was very high-level pro forma. It was not like very detailed, like, well, this doorknob is gonna cost this much money, and, you know, so it's.
Yeah, I just trying to get some boundaries.
Yeah, so, just overall, not necessarily to address your question, sort of high level than, than a very detailed cost estimate would provide.
And I believe the Washington State Building Code allows mass timber to be like 16 stories somewhere around there. So, it's definitely tall enough to get us the product that we're looking for for Overlake.
Yeah, I was just trying to get a, what, what's the range on these?
Okay, so.
Mentioned that, we can probably.
Yeah, so we've talked about that. So, in developing the incentive package, we, we developed some categories of the, kind of the public benefit that we wanna see. And this is sort of after our first iteration of the incentive program. These were the categories that we had remaining. Some of the incentives were kind of combined. So, the idea is that you would have to do something from each one of these categories to get any points, or to get the incentive. So, we'll review.
But not necessarily high cost items from each of them. It could be a low-cost item from several of those categories.
And these are above the base requirements, so these are additional affordable housing beyond what.
Correct. Yeah, it doesn't take the place of the mandatory affordable housing. But if you go above and beyond the mandatory, then you would get the incentive.
So, this is, you know, we've heard a lot of feedback on this from developers, and we give a number of options in the, in the draft incentive program right now. And what we've been hearing is that developers typically prefer less units, fewer units, but at deeper levels of affordability, rather than doing, you know, a lot of units at, you know, higher, higher cost or higher rent.
And just to point out that it's not a surprise that the affordable housing is one of the higher-cost items, right? So, that's a not unexpected assumption.
Yeah, those numbers that, that you see 116, 140, that's the impact on residual land value.
We have these in the PowerPoint just for reference, but we'll skip it from a time perspective.
Yeah, I'm not gonna read a table to you. Green building, so we looked at kind of some current and planned construction projects within the Northwest to kind of get what those cost measure, those costs are. And it's sort of assumed that, you know, we'll be in compliance with any performance standards and compliance with any updated energy code measures. And of, we had a lot of green building options. Our colleague Jenny put together a great package. And so, of the nine green building options for are assumed to be either a minimum going forward or a standard construction. And so, they were actually included in the baseline as we move forward with our analysis. So, impacts vary. So, and in your packet, you have more details on what E5, E6, E7, you know, what these, these columns are. But as you see, there's a, a variety of impacts from very high to very low. So, E7, E8, electric vehicle charging stormwater have very small impact. E5 and E6, which have a larger impact to the, the residual land value per square foot than some of the other incentive options. So, that's sort of, is what we were looking for here. There's some, there's some categories in each incentive group, in each, in each group that would cost a lot more, and some that would cost very little relatively. And just some more details there. And so, also looking at inclusive design, design was one of our categories as well. With ADA housing units have the highest impact, and some having very low impacts, such as some other inclusive design options having low and medium impact. So, there's a, a variety of impacts there.
I do want to jump in on this one. We have asked for assistance from the Northwest Urban Design Council to test the assumptions made on this. And the preliminary feedback from them is they think the cost is high for these features. And so, they think the actual cost is less, and so, they're gonna be doing a deep dive into this and providing us with some specific feedback. And they do this type of modification in construction all day long. And so, it's gonna be, it's an invaluable resource to have them do a part of this testing phase, so.
So, yeah, I think that, yeah, that was one of the, as it being such a high-level, kind of pro, like higher-level pro forma approach, they probably, they aired on the side of conservative with their numbers, you know, going higher rather than lower.
Do you have a question?
Ms. West.
So, this might, I'm hoping this has a really easy answer. But for ADA housing, is there a generic requirement that covers a range of disabilities? Or are there some, like subsections with a, within ADA?
So, the building code has, there's an ANSI 117, some, some, some that talks about accessible housing units, and there's different housing types. There's an A, B, C category, right? So, a visitable housing is actually type A, right? And so, the accessible housing units are type B and C. So, there are some definite things that are, go into what those units look like or those. So, we're referencing those, and we're trying to get cost analysis based on just the building code of those types of units. But there's also, like, some of the initial feedback that we got is just making sure that the standard cost of construction of a doorway, if you widen it, only costs an extra $12. So, making sure that what we're doing from the incentive is just acknowledging the difference in cost and not saying the whole door is the cost of the accessible unit, but just looking at the difference between the base. So, that's some of the things that we're testing. But yeah, there are some basic standards that you would look for in an accessible housing unit. So, we didn't try to come up with our own. We just looked, looked at the, the code for that.
And then, just to follow up on that, is it there, like, do you have a sense of what the need is in the population for different types of accessibility? Is that, I'm sort of, because if you take ADA broadly, it's just, it's very wide, so.
We do, and we have gotten feedback from our disability stakeholders in particular, like the needs for families with an autistic child. You need additional soundproofing, and you need more stable walls. They need to be heavier built. So, we didn't actually try to come up with, like, this is the unit for, but we do acknowledge that those types of housing needs are also present in our community, and they do cost additional. So, if there's some other way that we wanna to pull that in, we could. But again, one of the goals of the, the incentive program is because it's brand new, not coming up with 30,000 things. We're just trying to get a few things out, and then, we can build it over time. But we do know that there's some very specific needs that are in our community that aren't covered in just the standard accessible units.
Commissioner Rupana.
Becky, this is wonderful. This part is, it's harder to pin down, I see, but it's, it's a starting point, because I, I think that whole thing, if anybody takes advantage of these incentives, we'll have more units for aging in place also. And I think, I like the idea, because I was wondering when you brought it up first, whether, how we would define what inclusive design is, because the standards are, you can go, you know, everywhere.
Yeah.
So, I, I'm glad that we've pinned it down to a set, and we have gradations there, so that's awesome. Thank you.
And I do, I do think that we'll, over time, have to expand, like, one of the other, just one of the other things that. Those with severe disabilities often need a caretaker. And so, the spatial layout of the housing unit needs a caretaker space that is immediately adjacent to a fully accessible, potentially, you know, with the track getting somebody from the bed into the bathroom type of thing. So, we, there's definitely probably gonna be some things that we'll have to look at in the future to expand on this. But again, anything that we do to get any more will help at least start us on the track that, that we need to get there.
Literally and figuratively, foot and door.
There you go. I do wanna point out that one of the other findings here is, even though these costs are a little bit higher than what the Northwest or Universal Design Council was thinking they should be, is they're still really low compared to some of the others. So, actually going in this direction should be easy for developers to pick up as an option.
We also are looking at open space, art, and public amenities. So, these are sort of very varied, because not every developer is going to be building a community center. But that is an amenity we are looking for in Overlake. So, those would be some really special, you know, cases, which would be very high cost. And I think this was a, a category that our consultant sort of, there was a lot of challenges in coming up with analysis and ways to quantify some of these costs. in coming up with analysis and ways to quantify some of these costs. But we were able to sort of do, do some analysis for some of the incentives, looking at different prototypes and the, you know, as market demands may produce some of the amenities listed. So the incentive may not over time be necessary. And there had been an expression of some concerns about liability costs for some publicly accessible spaces. But those are things that we're sort of working through and looking into.
The additional work needed there.
Can I go back to the ADA for just a minute? How do these requirements differ from what's already required with the Fair Housing Act?
So we're not asking for something that's radically different. We're asking for more of them.
Okay, just more, but.
More of them.
The requirement is, is the same as what's required?
Yeah, there's a couple of places on the Universal Designs checklist that we've modified to add some extra space, like turnaround wheelchairs, because our disability community is saying all of these are built on the manual and we have these electrics that are much bigger and, or the reclining wheelchairs that we need to turn around in our bathroom too. So there are a couple of places that we have modified our checklist to be a little bit wider and provide a little bit more space. But we're not trying to come up with radically new designs. We're just trying to get more.
Okay, if you're not familiar with the Fair Housing Act, it requires that any development, any multifamily housing development of four or more units be, have at least one unit that's accessible.
And all of, a lot of the feedback that we've gotten has also been that if an affordable housing unit is accessible, it doesn't necessarily go to the accessible, needy person. So we're trying to work through that too, which is a completely separate issue. But there's a lot of things just about if we get more of them in there, it at least.
Sure. Yeah, I was just trying to understand if we were requiring more accessible or more units that were accessible.
Yes, yeah, no. We're not expanding on what accessibility means to that, other than just a few key places. Yeah. But we are including in the inclusive design checklist, how to make sites more accessible, how to make not just the building or the housing unit or the, I mean, just all of it altogether, just making it to where folks can get around easily, independently, whereas they can't necessarily do that today.
Yeah, so it's, yeah, it's both more units and then how to go above and beyond the basic requirements of accessibility for a site.
Yeah, and that is something that I, I don't see ending with Redmond 2050 or anytime soon. I mean, as we look at our design standards, you know, Mary and your accessibility came up with and talked about some of the things we have about our sidewalk. So there's a lot of things that we'll have to continue to have in conversations about from a design related perspective.
Sure.
So another topic, and this is kind of a, one of our catchall kind of building site form and uses. So we considered, we, during this process, we were hearing a lot, and I think we're continuing this conversation about displaced businesses. And we wanted to find a way to incentivize keeping businesses that would be potentially been displaced. So this category has, has components of that. So either businesses that would be seeking financial assistance or having discounted rents in new buildings would receive incentives. Different types of businesses like nonprofits would, you would be getting incentive points for, for locating in the building. And those costs sort of vary widely within the prototypes and, and overall. And retail space typically makes up a very small share of the, the cost of a property. So it, the costs varied widely on those different categories.
So, yeah, that was one of the things that the consultants highlighted in the report is these are easy gives and easy to do. It's where we're actually discounting the rent is, has the biggest impact for the developer, not necessarily any of the other pieces and parts. And accommodating a displaced business is, is actually something that is not that big of, like point two eight here, right? So it's just when we're actually starting to get into the affordable commercial spaces that has a bigger impact, which again is, is not that surprising.
So next step, we do still have this point system proposed. We're looking at the cost based point system and we're working with them on their final draft and looking at, based on the goal of getting to that FAR bonus of 4.0 based on the cost alone. And then we're looking at filling in the details. They started to give us some analysis on each of our options. So we're reviewing that currently. And we're looking on ways to add or otherwise incorporate points based on our priorities and looking at how, you know, how we do that analysis, like the analysis right now of the residual land value and the point system is just based on, on that residual land value and based on the cost of developer, not necessarily adding any extra points based on city priorities. So when we run the analysis on the points, like adding, adding that in to our analysis.
And to add on to that, there are some things that we might want to say are super high priorities and let's give them the maximum points for it, even though they might be lower cost items, but it's a significant issue for us that we want to get in sooner. We want to make sure that that, somebody chooses that option, right? So those pieces and parts of how the city priority weighs in or is work that's underway right now.
We're also looking at making sure our baseline assumption is also in line with the baseline of some other work that's being done by consultants. So CAI was hired to do some work on cost research for housing, the housing updates. And we are going to be setting up some time to talk to them and have our consultant, Eco Northwest, talk to CAI and make sure everyone's on the same page about our baseline assumptions. And it looks like we are getting close, but we just want to make sure we're all on the same page.
And this is important because when we started out with the consultant for Eco, their work was still underway, right? So the assumptions that was evaluated initially changed, you know, over even internally and then their work was completed. And so the, what we need to make sure in our assumptions from a baseline cost on our perspective needs to now match what they have said, this is what we want to change to so that we have a crystal clear, this is the new baseline, and then here's the difference from that. So there's just some work that we need to do just to make sure that that all matches up. We could skip that.
So this, and moving forward, we're working to finalize that structure. So what are the categories going to be? What are the minimum points? What are any other structures that we want to include? Do we want any additional bonus for those pilot projects, you know, for mass timber, for a community center? What are the, and what is that point? And what is the FAR that will kind of push us over that, that point? And we're going to be working on kind of building an incentive calculator. So this is an easy to understood incentive program that is just kind of, you plug in what you're going to do, you get what your points are and you can see, you know, what your FAR can be or what the FAR you want and how many points you need to get to it. See if it can work with the way stuff.
But giving them that Excel spreadsheet for them to just scenario plan really early on with that, it takes the guesswork out and it makes it easier for them to plan what they would like to do and figure out if their project would pencil. But it also will be really helpful for staff because then we, they can just go through the checklist and say, okay, confirm the paperwork matches, confirm the paperwork matches. Good, everybody's agreed. There's no question on how much points you're getting in return. If you do this, you get that. And so it'll make it easier on both sides.
Which is, you know, in our overarching goal of the Overlake update, Redmond 2050 and the code update is to add that clarity.
Commissioner Parna.
I think, I think this is wonderful. I had sort of one question, one, two comments, actually. So the first, I'll go with the comments first. When you're looking at the point system, given the fact that a lot of the green building stuff have become sort of minimum requirements, right? Perhaps that becomes slightly lower priority because given the fact that from an energy code perspective, the laws are in place and that they're going to forge forward and it's going to keep going upwards. If you put in water conservation, then in the minimum requirements, then anything they do should be given points, but it need not be such high priority. Because I think the people piece becomes, I think that's where we need to put in more effort, like affordable commercial, affordable housing, you know, the public amenities, that kind of stuff, right? So personally, I'm a big advocate for sustainability. You guys know that, but I think we've come to a point where I think the priorities might need to kind of, you want to rethink if everything goes into minimum.
And that's a good point. When we first started out, we had all of the highest priorities, green buildings, just then if you wanted to use the incentive program, they were mandatory. Now we've just made them mandatory. So, yeah, so we've already elevated the, the highest priority green building items.
Right. And, and also like when you see the impacting for, you know, renewable energy, that, that particular slide where you're talking about stormwater management versus an EV and all of that, those are people related things, right? Stormwater management's flooding, EV is for people to use. So again, those lower impact from their perspective is more desirable for us because a grid should clean up, they're required to clean up. So it need not be a high priority for us. So that was one comment, you know? And the second thing I wanted to ask was this points table. If we put it in now, how flexible is it in terms of changing things around? Because what I'm concerned about is, you know, I, I wrote this down and read it to Jeff last, last time, but I'm going to read it out because it's just simpler. I understand short term economic headwinds exist, right? But 2050 is a long range plan. So we need to, while we need to give nod to short term issues with projects that are already underway, pursuing them in the incentive thing should not be the norm in the short term. We need the long range vision to stay as is. So if we are doing anything which is, you know, right now suited for somebody, one, ideally, we should not do that. We should look like at a mid range, which turns into a long range vision at a better time because it's incentives. These are nice to haves, but these are not must haves.
So, yeah. I think that's a really good point. And one of the things that we just want to make sure everybody understands is that it's not a once and done. We understand that we'll have to keep track of the building code changes, right? We don't want to incentivize things that become mandatory. So this is not something that we anticipate being static. It's something that we'll probably take a look at at least every couple of years if there's anything else we need to add or take out or change the points because we have enough of that now. We need to, our priorities are shifting to other things, you know? So the intent of this is to be super flexible and to be constantly monitored. And our, our director Helen has mentioned that a couple of times too. This is something that we have to make sure is current at all times, but is also forward looking, that we're actually saying, let, there are some things that we know aren't going to come in in the first year. They need to be in the incentive program to make sure that people could use them because it's something we need in the long term. But we might need slightly different points starting out to get a few things in. So we have comps, like the, the mass timber product, there might be a pilot project for that. We, we only have extra points on that for three or four years, right? And then there's an expiration date for some of those pilot projects. So only two people can use them and then they die off. But they're, they're always going to be something that we have to go back and evaluate on a regular basis.
Thank you. That, that's wonderful to hear because that was what concerned me because maybe at some point, somebody wants to build that tower, right? Like, and then the incentives are like, are kind of hitting the mass timber business, right? So then you're like, okay, what's happening there? And I had one question about the growth scenario. So everything that we're talking about from the growth projections is all for the minimum. The incentives are all just bonuses because we are assuming that it may happen, it may not happen, right?
No, we are going to need taller buildings to meet our growth targets.
Right.
We have raised the baseline to make sure that we're not getting to one, two, three story buildings to come in, so that would help with that. We're still going to need those six, seven, eight story buildings and we know that they're going to come in. But one of the reasons why we are doing some massive amount of outreach with specifically people who build towers is because I need this code to be tower ready so that we can start getting, it might only be a couple, you know, initially, but at some point we're going to need to go there. So no, we, we cannot accommodate the growth that we've assigned to Overlake with just the podium style developments. We need towers to come in. I don't need everything to be a tower. I don't need everything to be a 20 story tower. But we are going to need taller buildings.
Okay. All right, thanks.
And yeah, as a refresh too, for, I mean, many of you have been on the planning commission for at least a year now, which I think is when we started the discussions on this incentive program. And if you recall, we started off with a very long list in each category. And sort of as we moved towards implementation, we sort of have like, well, we can try that later, we can try that later. So these things are still memorialized in our documents. So when we go to update this in, in a few years, you know, we have these things of, oh, hey, we wanted to try this, like maybe the time is now. And there'll be new things too.
Yeah, and even Jenny with the green building pieces and parts approached that too. Let's get some things out there, change the program up. And then there's things that are going to take a little bit longer to figure out how to make them work. And so those things we'll just continue to work on. And then when we got it figured out, we'll just plug them in. It's another option that people can choose from.
Anything else from commissioners? Commissioner Weston.
Hi, so I had a question or almost more of a comment, I guess. I was thinking a lot about an example like the community centerpiece where it's, I feel like Redmond has goals of what we want to see, either in number or type or like per density, like there should be some stated goals there. But I almost wonder if there's a way of communicating the points to meet that. And what I was actually thinking about is the way the EV goals were communicated early on where it was like, we know we want people to switch to EVs. So you're going to have this great incentive early on until we reach however many people buying this model. And that way it's all kind of written down upfront. You can always make it more generous later, but it's really nice. Like, I think it cuts down on uncertainty a little bit if it's, like, if, if this is planning to be an evolving thing, but you have some goals in mind, I don't think it hurts to state, like, this goal is here and like, maybe there's.
Maximum two community centers.
Right, or even like put a, put a multiplier, like until we reach this, you get one and a half times the point, like you can make the math work the way you want it, but it's something to really emphasize, like we have goals here as a community. And so like, and it could easily work with your form, it can be communicated upfront, but that way you're kind of building in your horizon.
Yeah, I think the, that's a very good comment. I appreciate that. I think what we're going to be challenged by is there's only so much our permit system can track, so many fields, right? So we just have to be careful that if we put that in there, we have the ability to track it and can easily monitor that. So we just need to pick and choose which ones make sense. Obviously, it's going to be easier if there's, we're doing a convention center and it's only one, as those, those are easy. But if it's something like, we need 1,000 EV parking spots, that might be something that would be, it'd be great to track, but I'd have to check with our permit text to see if there's a place that we could do that.
Yeah.
So I would say, let's take that comment back and talk internally to see what, what makes sense that we could easily do within our tracking system to do. But I think that's a very valid comment.
And what, for what categories that makes sense? Because, because it's also like, we're looking at the, the cost of, like, for example, a community center. I don't anticipate that we're going to have a ton of developers coming in and trying to build community centers to get that extra FAR. But, but there may, but yeah, there may be something that is, is sort of a, an easy or a less, a more cost effective way to meet a point system that we do want, we don't want to oversaturate Overlake with, that we would want to maybe analyze and track.
There's also a point where there's certain things that we want to just become standard. And so would you get them flooded out there enough that they just become the expectation? And then we can back off incentivizing that because the developments would naturally be, in order to be competitive, they have to offer those things.
Right, it's an amenity at that point.
And also I think there's a flip, and she's absolutely right, because like, if you had to think, the lowest hanging fruit, everybody's going to make a beeline for it, right? So if there's some point at which you're going to have to retire that. And so the tracking thing, it's an excellent point, Susan.
Well, it's just, it's kind of showing your hand ahead of time, but in a way that I think it's going to cut down a little bit on some of the bickering and horse trading, possibly.
And unless you make the critical pieces so worth their while, right? So, you know, that. that, I can give you 10 EVs, but then, you know, it's not going to give me the same thing as one affordable housing unit, for instance, right? I mean, apples to trucks comparison, but yeah. So it's, I don't envy you your jobs right now.
But there might also be simpler ways to track too, that we might, and or to put it end goal, like, we're going to incentivize these, but these particular things expire in three years. So there might be another way to, to actually get that same goal without actually requiring the, the permit system to have a new space. So we'll take that comment back, and we'll see if there is a way that we can fold that in. I think it's super valuable. Yeah.
And we, we had kind of thought about that too, early on. We hadn't gotten to the point of figuring out how to do it yet.
And then one additional comment, the insurance piece on the liability jumped out at me around the community spaces. And I just wanted, I'm sure this is a different thing, but as someone who used to do the insurance for the PTA, when we were using private spaces for community events, I really hope that that can be resolved through some either program or agreement with the city. Because it's, like, at the end of the day, it feels like it's just, there needs to be insurance for it. I'm sure it's more complicated than that, but it's, I hope it isn't.
And it wasn't like a, a specific case necessarily. It was more of like, you're trying to do this thing, and this is our concern about it.
Absolutely.
It wasn't necessarily like a, yeah.
Yeah.
Like, I'm sure there are ways to resolve, but I think in responding to this, that people just sort of red flag some things that bring up concern for them.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think would require additional programming and work, which.
Exactly, yeah.
Costs, and that is a, I think, a red flag for developers.
Yep.
I think one developer put it as, you know, we might not go there unless we need it to make our points, right? Because it's, it's not, there's some things that we're not concerned about at all. And if, can sit next to one where we have a little bit of concerns, or it takes a little bit of extra work, they'd go for the other ones, unless in order to get their points, they have to go for that one. So, I mean, it'll kind of pan out differently and.
It's just, I can see, like, liability gets kind of tossed out, and then the conversation freezes. And I would hate to see that happen.
When people don't want to think about it.
Right. Because often, the solution is actually fairly simple, but it's, I know that Redmond has constraints with public funds and all that. But I just, I really hope that wouldn't be a deal breaker.
And I, I think we may keep it in the incentive program, but that, we wanted to acknowledge that this is a concern that has.
Sure.
And brought to our attention.
We do have a couple of other engagement events. We have another workshop, open house, open office hours type of engagement with our development community later this month. We're going to be scheduling another workshop specifically on the incentive program in October, once we've completed some of the additional analysis to come back. So our folks who are tracking are more than welcome to join us either in September. We won't have a lot of the changes done at that point in time, but we are available to have conversations about it. And then in October, we hope to get some additional feedback from our development community on the other work that we're doing in testing, and be able to, to share what we're doing with the community priorities, and how that would mesh in and actually have a draft point system that combines cost and city priorities for folks to look at. Just another thing to, to mention too, is that we, we are engaging with folks like the Northwest Urban Design Council, with developers who build towers and to help us do. So some of the initial conversations that we've had about that have been really, really, really helpful. So we're excited to be able to come back and share with that. But again, as I mentioned, the conversations just I had today about mass timber might actually be in a better place than we'd initially thought. It's just also super exciting. So as soon as we get that feedback and with the new numbers and whatnot, the specific guidance, that particular developer has worked in Redmond already, but they have been building towers in other places in Puget Sound. So they're familiar both with Redmond and with tower construction. So they have already let us know that they'll, they'll have specific comments for the actual code itself, the design guidelines, for any potential issues that they've had dealing where the building code and the zoning code might end in conflict, what the resolution with those issues. So they're going to bring a lot of their actual practical experience to the table. And so when we come back to you with that, I think that's going to be a really exciting conversation, so.
Great. Any other questions from commissioners? I don't think there are any. Great. Wonderful presentation. Appreciate it. Staff and commissioner updates in.
Hello. The first thing we want to share is that there is an opportunity for multiple community engagement. We've got Tuesday, 9:19 from 5:00 to 7:00 PM, Redmond 2050, Pint with a Planner. This will be at Flatstick Pub. Lauren is working on some fun activities for us there. That Wednesday, 4:00 to 6:00 PM, long-range planning staff will be talking more Redmond 2050 at the King County Library in downtown Redmond. And then on Thursday, 9:21 from 4:00 to 6:00, the arts and culture team will have open office hours at Soul Food Coffee House downtown. The second thing we wanted to share is that yesterday, long-range staff brought forward some elements from Redmond 2050 to council. And council was just effusive with their praise for the arduous, lengthy, and quality work that the Planning Commission has provided. We went over the housing and centers policies yesterday, and we'll be talking more about parks and economic vitality the next go-around. And then the third thing we wanted to share is just a reminder about scheduling. The last two months of the year, we flip from second and fourth Wednesdays to the first and third Wednesdays. And because this is typically when a lot of our commissioners have occupying plans and travel, we just hope that you'll be proactive with communicating any scheduling needs or considerations. Because as you might imagine, we have a lot more work to do. And that's it. Back to you, Chair Nichols.
You can always look at the topics under review page on the Planning Commission website, and you'll see the extended agenda. And that will remind you of the exact dates for all the Planning Commission meetings through the end of the year. So, and I remind everybody that if you're going to, if you need to miss a Planning Commission meeting, please let both me and our staff liaison know, so that we're both aware. Email is probably the best. Just email, email me and email staff liaison, so that we're both, both on the same page as to whether, who we're, who's going to be there and whether we're going to have quorum. Okay. Any commissioner updates? Okay. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 And we are adjourned.